Good evening, everyone. We're ready to get started and talk about the fiscal year 2025 budget. So let me just give you a little bit of a highlight on how we're going to handle tonight. So you're going to hear from three of the finance folks. As you know, I'm Bob Ford, I'm the Chief Financial Officer. But also tonight you'll hear from Jake Jones, who's the Finance Manager, who manages our budget process. And Trent Sims, who is our Capital Planning and Funding Officer, who will spend a lot of time talking you through our capital budget and how we're funding it. So with that, I'm going to let Jake kick it off, and he's going to walk you through process. And then we're going to just sort of tag team this tonight. If you have questions as we're going along, just jump in, ask as you go, as we go. But this should work, I think. Michael? Michael?
Call an idea for a slide.
Yeah. There we go. Okay. You're off and running, Jake.
As he said, Jake Jones, Finance Manager. So up here, we've got a good calendar to the right. But before we get started, it used to be six months was about how long the budget process took. We got it down to pretty much sixty days, which left about another thirty days for council review. So as you guys know, the package got sent out October 4th. We're now sitting here October 29th at the actual budget workshop. So in large part, that was due to the budgeting and forecasting tool that we purchased last year after we got council approval. That was called Questica. So I think all the department heads in the back of the room would agree that that has streamlined this process extremely to where we've gotten to where we are. Hopefully, you guys appreciate the extra time to look at the material. But overall, us three, we're going to be the ones presenting the budget, but it's certainly not us that are coming up with everything. It is buy-in from every department, every fund. All of those folks, those managers that are in charge of their own budgets, they're the ones that are actually inputting this stuff. We just are kind of the conduit to make sure all the numbers work at the end of the day. But like I said, the main highlight here is we've been able to streamline this process quite a bit. And as you can see, we meet with people regularly. First step is getting HR templates out to the folks. That's personnel budgeting. And as we get later into the presentation, you'll see that our operating budget is predominantly personnel. Then round one, round two, that's where we're just fine tuning numbers, looking at everything from past years, prior performance, streamlining. You know, most of it's sales tax driven. Those forecasts lead into what we're going to spend next year. And then we roll it all up as an admin team, prepare the package, and that leads us to tonight. So Bob will kind of talk about the revenue piece of it. I'll talk about the expense side, and we'll get into capital, and then we'll be on our way.
Thanks, Jake. So from a highlight perspective, as you recall, starting last year, we started breaking the budget into two components, an operating budget and a capital budget. Historically, prior to that, it were mixed together, blended. It was a little difficult to understand how everything worked. But by breaking it apart, the highlights for this year for fiscal '25, on a consolidated operating budget perspective, we're going to show a four and a half million dollar surplus. On a consolidated capital budget perspective, we're going to show, and Trent's going to spend some time walking you through the detail, but we're going to show that we're going to spend fifty-three point four million dollars. And that's going to be funded with cash for our balance sheet, twenty-five point six million, grants of twenty-six point six, and we have other sources of revenue to fund that capital budget of one point two million. So then on a consolidated basis, if we take that operating budget and add it to the capital budget, our operating, rather, our consolidated net surplus for the year is going to come out right at four point five million dollars. So we're forecasting another good fiscal year, four twenty-five. From a debt perspective, we'll start the year with about fifty-seven point three million dollars in debt outstanding. We'll end the year with more debt outstanding than we started with. But that is a function of the fact that beginning about into the first quarter, into the second quarter, we'll actually start to draw down on the SRF debt to finalize and finish our wastewater project. The reality is, we're actually going to pay some debt off in '25. We're going to pay off the Series 2017 debt, which is primarily Parks and Rec related, but that debt gets paid off. And that's going to save about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in debt service. We're also going to pay off the fire truck. That's about eighty-eight thousand dollars a year in debt service. And currently, we're planning to pay off the NTFC loan, which is a loan that we took out to help fund the Highway MM project. And our plan was, I mean, technically today, we are somewhat sideways in the compliance requirements because we haven't spent that money on the MM project as of this point. So it's been sitting on our balance sheet, the money. So we've got an asset of one point eight million dollars sitting on our balance sheet. We've got a liability of one point eight on the balance sheet. Net-net, it's a wash. And we've been earning a spread. We borrowed the money at one point four percent, and we've had it invested at somewhere above four percent. So from a financial perspective, it's been a good deal. But the money's supposed to be used to fund the Highway MM project. We are in a very interesting environment because over the last couple of weeks, we've become, I wouldn't call it a find list, but we think that there's an opportunity for an additional grant, a pretty significant grant, to fund that project. So where we had planned to pay off the MTFC monies sooner, we're going to just kind of sit back. We're going to wait and see what happens with this grant, which is a federal grant. And it's twenty-five million dollars. So if we get that, the Highway MM project is funded. We're going to put some money in the deal. And if we do that, we want to keep that MTFC money sitting on the sidelines, and we'll make a decision on that sometime in the next three or four months, whenever we get a final answer on this federal grant. I only tell you that because the time this information went out till today is when we've seen this change. So keep your fingers crossed. It'd be great to get this twenty-five mil. It would solve something that we think would be a significant positive thing for the City of Republic. But if we don't get it and we stay with the plan that we had put forth a month or so ago, saying that we're pulling out of the Highway MM project, then we will repay that debt. Lastly, think about where we are from a cash perspective. Well, in the year, somewhere around thirty-two million dollars in cash. Remember, the predominant amount of cash that we had on our balance sheet came from the debt, the Series 22 debt, which we borrowed to be able to fund the wastewater project. In addition, we've had grant money flowing in. Remember, we have two twenty-five tranches, twenty-five million tranches of grants flowing in from Missouri Department of Revenue to Department of Natural Resources to fund our wastewater project. One is a seventy-thirty split, one is a fifty-fifty split. So that money has been, we've been spending our money. We've been getting refunds and reimbursements on that. And because of that, we've seen our cash balance start to dwindle down. We expect that by the end of next year, we'll have about sixteen million dollars in cash still outstanding. So let's talk about, at a high level. At a high level, we're forecasting revenues of thirty-six million dollars for next year. Remember that we had this discussion last year where we talked about the difference in external revenues and internal revenues. So we break out revenue. So if it's sales tax revenue, if it's grant revenue, if it's third-party revenue coming into the city, we identify it as external. Internal revenues are really specifically when we transfer money from one fund to another fund. It's an expense from the fund that transferred it. It's a revenue item for the fund that received it. And the example here, this four million dollars of revenue internal is predominantly money that's being transferred from the general fund to public safety. So public safety has got, of that four million dollars of internal revenue, public safety, split between fire and police, is recognizing ninety-eight percent of that four million dollars is our monies coming from the general fund going to public safety. It's revenue to public safety. It's expense, we'll see down here, there's an offset. It's expense to the general fund. In the consolidation process, when we go through the audit, those two items get eliminated. They wash each other out. So really, we're talking about pure revenue of thirty-two million dollars and pure expense of twenty-seven point five million. Net-net, we're getting to an operating surplus of four point five million dollars. From a capital budgeting perspective, the predominant capital project for this next year continues to be the wastewater project. Forty point five million dollars being spent on the wastewater project for 2025. We've also got the administrative building, the wing that we're planning on building to the side here, a four and a half million. Schuler Creek Trail of one point six million. Commercial Avenue, JR Martin of one point three, and other activities of four and a half. So if you look at, those were the large projects. We've got fifty-three million dollars of expenditure on the capital side, predominantly projects, but some maintenance activity going on also. And we're going to fund that, as I indicated earlier, we're going to fund that with twenty-five million dollars of cash currently sitting on our balance sheet, twenty-six million dollars of grants coming in, primarily Missouri Department of Natural Resources, and other sources. Once again, I talked about the debt service, the debt payoff of the Series 2017 and the fire truck, and our cash is going to drop over the year. But once again, coming back to the bottom line, on a consolidated net surplus perspective, we're showing, we're projecting four and a half million dollars of positive surplus for the city next year. So if we take that revenue line and we break it up into its various components, as you would expect, sales tax revenue, city sales tax revenue is the predominant or the largest component that makes up our revenue stream. So we've got twelve point four million dollars of operating revenue coming from city sales taxes. We also have city sales tax money coming in one line item called the capital improvement sales tax. That revenue is specifically restricted to fund capital projects. So we actually show that revenue source coming in on the capital budget, and everything else is flowing, every other source of sales tax revenue is flowing in through the operating budget. We have other sales taxes, predominantly Green County funds the law enforcement sales tax, as well as a quarter cent sales tax goes to Parks and Recreation. So other sales taxes of three million dollars, property taxes of just a little over two, which gives us a total of taxes for the city forecasted for next year of seventeen point five million dollars, or almost fifty-five percent of our total revenue stream. From a business perspective, if we step down, now we're talking about non-sales tax or tax-related activities. We're talking more business-like activities. So utility billing, we're forecasting nine point two million dollars in revenue for next year, which represents about twenty-eight point five percent of the total revenue stream coming into the city. Note that in this utility billing number, we've got wastewater billing as well as water billing. We have budgeted a placeholder in the water billing cycle, or the water billing bucket, if you will, of about a twenty-five percent increase. You know, David has talked to you, and we're going to come back and spend a little more time fleshing this number out. But we know that the water fund is basically, it doesn't have any excess cash. And we have capital needs coming over the next five years, and we're going to need to build cash to fund those capital needs. So we have built a placeholder in the budget with twenty-five percent growth built in for the water rate structure, specifically for water. You'll notice that interest income of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars is a significant drop from what we saw last year. Once again, our cash is coming down. We're spending our cash. Where last year, we had fifty, sixty million dollars in cash. Now we're talking about moving from an environment where we've got thirty-two million dollars at the beginning of the year, down to about sixteen million dollars at the end of the year. So that's the predominant driver of why interest income is coming down. But we're also seeing rates starting to soften a little bit. The rate issue is not as big of an impact factor as is just the amount of cash that we have on the balance sheet. But net-net, this gets us back to that thirty-two million dollars of external revenue that we talked about from the highlights page. Now, kind of peeling the onion a little bit further and looking at city sales taxes. We've broken out city sales taxes by the type of sales tax revenue. So the general fund revenue, marijuana sales tax, three-quarter cent, public safety sales tax, et cetera. And you can see the growth from 2022 through what we're projecting for 2025. In total, this is about a little over a half of a million-dollar improvement from '22 through 2025. Once again, it gets back to what David has been saying, and I've been saying for the last year or so, that revenues are relatively flat from a sales tax revenue perspective. So we have not gotten aggressive in terms of our forecasting for next year. We forecasted a one percent growth rate this year, and we're pretty much on budget. We're forecasting a one percent growth rate for next year. So at this point in time, in total, we get to sales tax revenue of three point five million dollars. And one million of that is going to the capital side, twelve point five is going to the operating side. So before Jake comes up and spends time on the expense side, are there any questions on revenue? Sales tax revenue, anything that doesn't make sense in terms of what we're forecasting for next year?
Mr. Ford, just a general question. What was the Commercial Street project, the reminder?
Commercial Street is the expansion of what the...
Intermediated school.
Yeah.
The road goes to the school.
Okay. That's all.
Yeah.
One percent is a kind of generic placeholder? I mean, is much more going to that? Or I know we try to be conservative, but...
It's a, to some extent, it is a placeholder. We also know that we've got some incremental growth potentially coming from new businesses coming to town. But we once again wanted to be conservative, recognizing that if we see by the time we get to June or July, we're ready for the first budget amendment, we could always move that number up. We wanted to build a budget around a fairly conservative number so that we had some opportunity in '25 that if we didn't see that come to fruition, we still had some headroom with this four and a half million dollar operating surplus. Other questions?
Mr. Ford, he might get into on the expense side, but on those loans that you said we'd be paying off, one in particular, like the fire truck, a couple of others, are those being paid off early? Or are they just...
The Series 17 debt is being paid off on time.
Okay.
And the fire truck's being paid off six months early.
Awesome.
We're just trying to sort of clean up our balance sheet, if you will. And our goal is, where we have an opportunity to pay off debt, we're going to do it. And it just, once again, it's a kind of a housekeeping tidying up our balance sheet issue.
Well, hey, chief, what truck is that?
That's the aerial truck at Station Two, and I think the interest was one point eight percent.
Okay. It's actually a little higher than that.
How old is it?
We bought it new in 2017.
Okay.
It's two percent or two point two?
I think it's two, I think it's two and a quarter.
Yeah.
But with rates coming down and the fact that we're going to make that payment six months into 2026, we said, let's clean up the balance sheet. There's some value in that, in that balance sheet being cleaned up and getting that off our books.
And then I have one more, not to get real deep on this, but say we were able to get another grant or funding from the state for the wastewater plant, be able to pay that way down, what does that do with our budget?
So what it does is this. So today, the SRF debt, we haven't borrowed anything on the SRF debt. And think of it like a construction loan. As we need it, we're going to borrow it. We have headroom up to fifty million dollars. And at a project total build-out, we probably won't spend a hundred percent of that fifty million. But if we found that we had another twenty-five that came in before we had drawn down all of that debt, we just wouldn't draw the debt debt. And we would use the cash from the grant as opposed to the SRF debt.
Okay.
We don't have to draw all of it. We could accelerate it and pay it off sooner if we wanted, which we probably wouldn't because the rate's really low.
Exactly.
Right now.
Yeah, SRF is what?
It's one. It's at one point two seven plus a fifty basis point administration fee. But it's pretty cheap.
It has to be used for that purpose, though.
Yes, it has to be used for that purpose. We can't put the money someplace else. Other questions? And we'll spend a little more time talking about debt, debt service toward the end of the presentation. Okay.
And again, he just went over the revenue side, so I'll touch on the expense side. And again, this slide is just going to be that external expense that he talked about. The top right kind of breaks down where the expense, where the dollars go. The biggest expense, obviously, is going to be our people. Moving down, operating expense, that's a broad term that encompasses a lot of different things. Think of that, keeping the lights on, maintenance, supplies, all those sorts of things. Next category, department-specific. Those are still operating expenses, but Parks and Rec expenses look a lot different than the police department expenses. So in the budgeting process, we separate those two just so they can see it. And then debt service, again, so seventeen percent of the total expense goes to debt service. And to your question earlier, if we're not drawing down an additional twenty-five million, that number would stay closer to that versus the more you borrow. Next year, the number we're looking at is going to be a higher percentage. So, but the next couple of slides is mainly going to be talking about the personnel expenses. First one, top left, we have budgeted a COLA, so cost of living adjustment, two percent. Merit increases on average of three percent. So I think Lisa has talked about it a couple of times, but we're moving more towards a pay-for-performance model. So the three percent merit, that's going to be an average. That's what we've budgeted for everybody, which you'll see higher performers get a little bit more than that, lower performers a little bit less, but it'll average out to a total around five percent for every employee. Moving down to healthcare, I'm going to jump to the bottom point first. On average, nationwide, through our brokers and carriers, it's looked like about eleven point two percent increase. We actually did slightly better than that, so just a seven percent increase is what's in there in the budget. And just as a reminder, I know you've heard this all before, but the city covers a hundred percent of the employees' costs and fifty percent of any dependent care. So, and then loggers, this one's a recent one. This got approved just recently. But just as a reminder, what it does essentially for the calculation, if you're not aware, it's years of service, times the multiplier, times your final average salary. And that multiplier is what went up by sixty percent. So, and then to help pay for that, the offset, the 457 plan, we went from a nine percent contribution rate across the board down to a four percent that requires employees to put in four percent to get that four percent. So on average, you can see that compensation obviously is going to go up due to these factors. But there's a few other factors outside of that. We've had a few market adjustments to base salaries just to keep our employees at a competitive level across the board. And there's also other related benefits that have also went up in addition to insurance and retirement. Where do you want to point this thing at? Oh, there we go. So this is a good slide. This kind of shows the difference in the '24 budget and the '25 budget on just the personnel expenses, on what's more expensive. So based on what I just said, obviously, we can see healthcare and retirement now makes up a higher percentage of the total personnel expense that we incur every year. So on the left side, 2024, just the salary component used to be sixty-eight point three percent. Now it's sixty-seven point four. Salaries didn't go down. It just now makes up a smaller percentage of the total overall expense. And that far right column actually shows the difference. So we go up in every category, but I think it's important to highlight where the investment is going. So we've been really intentional on David Haseman ever since he's been here on taking care of the employees. I think this is a good slide that highlights that, you know, healthcare and retirement benefits. It's a big deal. It makes up a big chunk of the expense, and that's growing. And that's because the benefit to the employee is going up as well. Everything else has remained pretty stable. Salary, I just told you there was a five percent increase across the board. So you might be wondering why it's only going up by two point seven percent. There's a lot of other factors in there than just that. We've also had some turnover, so people that were making more, not here anymore. You hired in entry-level positions. There's a lot of different things there. Healthcare, I just told you, seven percent, even though it's gone up by nine percent because there's also different plans that people select. So if we have employees that come in that have a family, that's going to be slightly more expensive to the city than me that doesn't have anybody else. So that's just a couple explanation points on some of those variances. But everything else is pretty self-explanatory because a lot of the benefits the city pays for is just basically based off the salary. So as salaries go up, so do benefits. Next slide, to piggyback off of Bob's point about sales tax revenue being relatively flat, the same is basically true for staffing levels. We started adding ten people in 2022, and now we're only projected to add three heads in 2025. A lot of this is in relation to the public safety sales tax, so addressing the need there. So as that sales tax grows, it's going to open up more funding. You know, both chiefs will attest that, you know, we're getting close to our goals. We've still got some work to do to meet those numbers, but we're getting there. So projected, one hundred and sixty-three full-time employees by the end of next year, starting the year with one hundred and sixty, so we should end the year right around one hundred and sixty full-time employees. So you can see the growth rate there. But any questions on personnel expenses or any, in general, external operating expenses before we kick off to the fun stuff on the capital side? All right, Trent?
So this kind of covers a high level of what our capital budgets are, expenses are for each of the budgets. And I'll kind of dive more into depth on kind of where our water tower project is going, the different funding sources we have for our streets departments, and our long-term plans for capital developments in the city. So within the general fund, the majority of the capital expenditure that we have for 2025 is the administrative building. And it's important to note that we do have cash for that. We don't have to borrow any funds. All of that is covered. And then in the Parks and Recreation Department, their primary capital project is one point three million dollars allocated to the JR Martin Park. We are looking at grants and maybe some naming rights and sponsorships to kind of help maybe bolster that project and kind of cover all the expenses that are there. Police, we're looking at predominantly the computers, new vehicles. We're going to use the Green County municipal grant to kind of cover the purchase of MDTs. Fire is kind of holding back. They're saving most of their money for that large ladder truck purchase in three years. And then in water, we are looking to kind of increase the rate. Funding for cash will go towards a waterline out at Conaway Hope. But that's a developer agreement, so, you know, Karen goes out and works kind of organized, kind of develops that contract. And then when we get the invoices for the materials and the equipment, we then submit those for reimbursement, and then that cash comes back. So the only cost to us for those development agreements is the staff time. So you'll see those expenses in the capital budget, but they're essentially like a wash. And then under streets, we have the Schuler Creek Trail. Of that one point five million dollars, we still have one point four million that we will be drawing down in STBG grant funds. So we're probably drawing down a few hundred thousand of that the remaining of this year. So it'll probably be one to one point two million of that that we'll still draw down next year. So the actual hard cost to us for the Schuler Creek Trail next year will probably be closer to the five hundred thousand. Then we have the Commercial Avenue Street project, street overlays, and then some remaining projects. And then we're all well familiar with the wastewater treatment plant. So the street fund, capital expenditures, whenever you look, do a deep dive into that, the primary funding mechanisms are either cash, you know, to cover overlays, vehicles, street extension improvements, or those developer agreements where, like this Hankins Street over here, you know, David Cameron, Karen, they're very innovative. They work with the commercial partners or business entities to kind of determine where do the roads need to be so the growth can kind of continue in Republic so that we can expand jobs and expand progress and, you know, live the good life in Republic. So like the Hankins Road project, you know, we collected the invoices for all the materials and the equipment, rental rates, submitted those to... submitted those to Tom Rankin, he paid those back, and the only cost to the city was essentially the staff time to be out there. And then with the CIST fund, we have that tax to cover Shuah Creek Trail, any Heinz Street improvements that we have planned, grants, you know, the Shuah Creek Trail grant that was mentioned. We were also recently awarded two hundred and forty thousand dollars to create an ADA transition plan, so we just recently got the grant agreement for that. So that ADA transition plan will determine what capital expenditures need to be made to actually update all of the infrastructure that the city is responsible for in the right of way, as well as facilities. But it'll also do a comprehensive sidewalk gap analysis. So then, once we kind of determine long-term, because grants take a long time, you know, three, four years from now, like what are the sidewalks that David Cameron wants built? Are the cities, citizens determining to be built? So that we can proactively write grants to Save Streets For All, another Department of Transportation grant, so that we can get that funding, you know, two or three years ahead of time so that the capital budget in the future is predominantly more covered more by grants than less by, you know, local city dollars itself. And then we're also just talking about doing capital improvement at the district with the Republic Commons Project. And then the water tower and well project, we, we looked at the twenty nineteen water tower and well that was built, or the water tower that was built by the City of Nixa in twenty nineteen, and they, and since they built their water tower, price roughly doubled. So we estimate that the water tower and well together will cover, cost between seven million and ten million dollars at the high. The variance is, we don't know how tall the tower, water tower is gonna be, so once preliminary designs are actually constructed, then we'll know how tall the water's gonna be, and we'll be able to get more accurate quotes for what that, what that project's actually gonna cost. But we're assuming between seven and ten million dollars. Currently, we have five million dollars in congressionally earmarked dollars. You know, the purchasing power of that grant diminishes with time, you know, as inflation. But we also need, but we don't have sufficient capital in the bank right now to build, to fund the full seven to ten million. So we're looking at increasing the rate so that we can save back that, that cash so that we can do this. So right now, some of the city staff are looking at kind of, what is the water model in Republic? When is, when's the perfect timing, when does this need to be built? And we're kind of crafting like a plan for kind of rolling out that, you know, either in phases so that we can start drawing down the grant funds and start paying for like engineering, but then also building cash simultaneously as we increase the water rate. So, you know, we'll build cash, hopefully look at doing engineering in the next year or two, and then hopefully, you know, begin construction in the next few years. And then, as you know, we want to develop a unified government campus here. So the administrative building is funded. On the fire station, we purchased land, but we have not yet identified funds for building the fire, the new station, but we have bought the land. So long-term, we have to kind of think about, okay, where's the funding source for that fire station gonna come from? And then, as a part of the new charter process, the capital, five-year capital improvement plan will be a part of the budget process every year. For twenty twenty-five, we kind of talked about those expenses, the general fund, the major expense is that new administrative building. For parks and recreation, it's JR Martin Park. The water fund is, you know, the capital, or the Conaway Hope waterline, which is a developer agreement that'll be reimbursed, as well as some expenses for AMI. And then wastewater is the treatment plant as well, and then the street fund has a variety of street projects that are funded by either those developer agreements, that ADA transition plan, or other kind of street projects. It's kind of more of a hodgepodge. And then next year, we'll kind of start seeing kind of the capital demands kind of decrease as we finish the wastewater treatment plant and kind of get some of those bigger projects off the books. Any questions about capital expenditures?
One of the reasons why Trent went through and talked about the, the tower and well project is because it, it factors into our five-year capital plan. So you remember last year, we, historically, we had the, our, our five-year CIP plan was a separate process from the budgeting process. We integrated that last year, and as a result, now we have a five-year plan. That five-year plan, the first year of that five-year plan, is the budget capital for next year, the out four years or what we're forecasting for the, for the out years. Trent was trying to set the stage that even though we don't, we're not gonna build a water tower in twenty-five, it's coming down the road, and it's in our five-year capital plan.
What's the large cost in twenty-seven?
Sorry?
The twenty-seven, what's the street fund?
The street fund?
Fifteen million.
And twenty twenty-five?
Twenty-seven.
Oh, twenty-seven? So the Highway MM project, that's based on that, and as Bob mentioned, if you're a praying person, pray, we can get that twenty-five million, that'll knock that out and reduce our obligation to about one point four million for that project. Any other questions?
Cool, well, I'll pass it off to the next, the next person. Thank you. So we talked a little bit about, one of the funding sources for our capital program is the capital improvement sales tax. We put this chart together really to be a little more illustrative of how we've spent that CIST money. So we've gone back to the initiation year of twenty seventeen and identified by project how that money was spent over time. So this is just gives you an idea that the commitment that we made to the citizens and how we fulfilled on that, that commitment, and where that money has been spent and in what year it's been spent. So once again, you get out to a budget year of this year, we're gonna spend six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that CIST money, leaving a surplus of about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But by the time we get to the sunset year of that project, of that, of that fund, we'll have spent all those funds. So just to give you an idea of how we spent it and where we spent it.
And twenty twenty-seven was the sunset year of that?
It is the sunset year of that. We'll, we're currently in discussions on how and when do we want to go back and, and renew that, that tax? And what do we want to use that tax to fund in the future? So from a debt summary perspective, we're gonna end the year, as we indicated in the earlier slide, at fifty-seven point three million dollars in debt. And we've broken out by debt type how that makes up and how it breaks out by funding. So in total, we had fifty-seven point three million. We expect to borrow on the SRF money about ten million in fiscal twenty-five. We've got principal repayment of two point two million, that gets us to that sixty-five million dollar number that we talked about. Once again, highlighting the fact that on the Series Seventeen debt, some of this miscellaneous equipment debt, as well as the fire truck, were down to zero balances. And then we've identified the debt service here as compared to the principal outstanding. We've got principal payments in twenty-five of two point two million, interest payments of two point one. We've got fees and adjustments for a number of our loans, so we've got a total of four point four million dollars in debt service that Jake already mentioned that we're gonna, we were obligated to pay in fiscal twenty-five. Then last but not least, in looking at that debt service environment, let's look beyond twenty-five. So we'll have, we'll pay off some debt in twenty-five, we've got some debt service in twenty-five, but what does that leave us with? That leaves us with the Series Twenty-three debt that we used to fund the Rush and the JR Martin Project. We've got a fire station one, fire station two, some Brookline Utilities. The Series Twenty-two debt, which is, we split here, we borrowed basically forty-five million dollars in twenty-two to fund two things, one, to fund this building, and two, but predominantly to fund a portion of the wastewater project. So we, we break it out as to what, what components represent the bill's building component, as well as the wastewater component. And then last but not least, we've identified the wastewater component of the SRF funding. I think that the important thing on this chart is that we still have nearly fifteen million dollars to pay on debt service over the coming years on the Series Twenty-three debt. If you look at this debt on the Series Twenty-two debt plus the SRF debt, that's another one hundred and twenty-five million dollars of debt service that we have coming down the pike. So one of the things you've heard David say is, we're not gonna, our goal is not to borrow any funding for, for any incremental project, and we're gonna save the money to pay for things. We're gonna save the money to pay for the well and the new water tower. And the way we're gonna get there is we're gonna have to raise rates in order to build cash so that we don't go further into debt. So even though we're showing that we're paying down a, a number of our outstanding, our outstanding debt obligations, we still have some sizable debt service numbers that we're gonna deal with over the next twenty-five years. So with that, happy note. Are there questions on the debt service side? Questions with the debt that's outstanding? Anything on the capital side that we can answer? I know you've had the, the budget package for a number of weeks, and you've had a chance to go through it. We're happy to answer any question relative to this, the budget package. Our goal would be to do the first and second read of the budget next Tuesday at the council meeting?
First and second read.
First and second read. We're, I mean, I'm kind of looking at this kind of like the first read, you had a chance to really go through it in depth here tonight, as well as for the last three weeks. We're not gonna add a whole lot of information next Tuesday, so we'll do both first and second read. Our goal is to get the budget approved because we've got some, we, we wanna step into our, our healthcare signup process the next day, but we don't want to step into that process until we've got a budget that's approved.
My, my only concern is that would be the first hand for our budget that we have in front of the constituency and for, you know, all the citizens for the public to see that process.
Because we've had this, and even though it's, it's put out to the media, I don't know how much people realize that we're sitting here listening to this, and we've been looking at it, just public perception of shoehorning it in and as a, here's the budget and we pass it before people even realize it's a thing.
That would be a little bit rough, yeah.
That's my only thought on it, too. I mean, I understand though, if we wanted to move healthcare signup and open enrollment along, but it just, I don't know what, what public perception of that will look like.
Because it was, I feel, I know it was hard in the beginning of that conversation on having that first and second read, the importance of it, and a lot of it, I think, that we've had so far has been tied to rezones and things of that.
Second plaid, that kind of stuff.
Second plaid. The budget.
Or final plaid.
I'm a little bit nervous about doing a first and a second read both in one meeting, just from feedback from constituency, I'm a little concerned about that.
I agree.
Do we, do we put, you know, this is, you know, publicly we're having this meeting and everything, and do we, when do we, do we put this stuff out on the website or beforehand, or what's the budget wise typically not right?
I think the packet has been, the packet was published.
Yeah, yeah.
Back.
On April, October the fourth.
It's hard to sell the constituency because even though, I know we've had the information, I'm not sure that I would have additional questions between now and then, but with the constituency, when they see it at the council meeting, they see it being pushed through the one, two shot on that meeting that they see on YouTube, and that definitely raises some eyebrows, I would say, especially I'm trying to do that with the budget.
I, I see your point, but also, is this available to them? Is this being recorded tonight, today?
It is being recorded.
Okay.
So it's available, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm the same boat you are, it's available, the press is notified.
Yeah, it's available, and.
It wasn't a scheduled meeting that we had had on our approved schedule through the year, though, was it? I believe that.
It was. It's been announced at all the council meetings.
But I'm not as far as the one that we approved at the beginning of the year with all of the dates.
No.
No.
And that's my only concern is just that, I would look at that, too, if this was a scheduled meeting, but it's just hard for me to include the workshop with the constituency and holding them to that same obligation that we're held to.
We do publish in the newspaper the public hearing for the budget, that was published probably three weeks ago, so there was advance notice of that.
And to me, having the workshop shows our citizens that we're taking the time, extra time, to really go in depth with it, where this is all we're talking about.
Yeah, we'd want to just make sure and reiterate that during the meeting.
I got a question, though, for legal counsel.
Yes.
Doesn't it require, even though that night, so say if the first read there was, because that's the first, the first read would allow the public to comment, so the second read is not even a public comment? It's really, and so I think the consideration could be, because no one wants to shoehorn it, and that's not how we function. I think what Bob's doing, a very good job and delicate job of saying, is with all the insurance changes and how we have, it's not shoehorning it, we started six, or tried to get this done in a timely fashion, gave it three weeks in advance so people could have it, published it, recorded it. So be very clear, the insurance driver is the driver, not us just here, let's just shove it down some way. There's one presentation I still haven't given, it's just like, I, it's the elephant in the room is the water. Because those that have been here long enough have known the wastewater has taken the predominant issue, and we have held off on the water. And I've got a very difficult message on that side that I gotta deliver on this water tower because we've had to defer that, those projects. And so, kind of shoot the messenger time, but at the same time, and so what my recommendation would be, just making sure I'm straight with, with legal counsel here, is if there was a massive opposition and there was a lot of public comment, the council could reserve the right to table the second reading until the next meeting if they wanted to. So you still have the right in that meeting if there is, because the public's not gonna comment. They have comment on the first read. Second read, that's only council comment, and you actually do the vote.
Well, they don't vote, yeah, they wouldn't vote on whether to hear the second read until this coming meeting, and so they vote at that point, ask unanimous.
That's what I'm saying, it's like, but if there was public comment on the first read, then they could say, then we'll just defer the second read, then they could say, hey, listen, I want to table the second read or not do the second read until the second meeting. I don't know what that does on this, so I think there has to be some level of research, sorry, Lisa, of what that, that actually means. And if that is, if that is an issue, option B would be call a special meeting to do the second read. And don't do, I mean, just.
And that would be something that I, I would feel more in favor of, I don't know how counsel feels, just in that, I mean, even if, if I go to a constituent and I'm adamant about everything, the budget is to par and I have no additional questions, having it in front of counsel, or having it in front of the citizens to have that chance to see it at council, hear our discussion, and then to have that period in between where they can have their chance to talk to us. And there may, in all the years on the budget, very rare do I have someone contact me about budget, but if I took that opportunity around, I would hear about it nonstop.
Because the likelihood of anything changing in the two weeks is.
And it's not that it's significant right now, it's just that if we did something like that now, I feel like that would be something that would be drug on through the year, and be something that would brought back.
What does that mean on our insurance side?
So we need to have open enrollment done by December first because last year, we didn't have time to, for, you know, to double check everything. Our carriers were staying the same, and it, there was a glitch in the system, and the first week of January, we were without insurance. So the new rule was to have it done by the first week of December. So with Thanksgiving in there, it would be extremely.
What's the calendar, what's the calendar? So we're meeting November fifth?
The fifth, so the, the second read is gonna be the night, wouldn't be the nineteenth if we waited to the next.
So could we, would, would this be a, a way to do it, would be just to modify the calendar schedule to say, do November fifth and November twelfth, so that it at least gives the, that additional time for them to do that versus doing it the week before? Because that is gonna be, I mean, that is the challenge of trying to do open enrollment during Thanksgiving.
Yeah, again, if they're in public.
Yeah, and I mean, I don't like to make an issue about that, but I know if we did, it would be, I'd never hear the, I, I'd like that as a compromise just because that does give the citizens a week to.
I'm just trying to offer you.
And I won't be here the twelfth. And it helps.
I got a question.
Couple of us want to hear the twelfth.
You have the citizens.
When have we had the budget approved prior?
I'm coughing. So when the citizens comes to the meeting, and if they do oppose it, which I doubt that they will, is that gonna change anything?
So, when the citizens comes to the meeting and if they do oppose it, which I doubt that they will, is that gonna change anything? I don't see it changing anything.
I mean, to be quite candid, the budget is the budget. Right. I mean, we've spent a lot of time working on this budget, coming up with what our forecast is for the revenue stream, but more importantly, really scrubbing the numbers on the expense side and on the capital investment side. So, I mean, if someone said, we don't like four and a half million dollars in net, we wanna see eight and a half million dollars of net, I don't know how we would get there.
So, it's kinda mute, yeah, in my mind.
I, I think the question, so let me, I'll just add some, I think the question would be, is somebody question, why is the Heinz Street sidewalk not included in the capital budget? So, why did we, that, it's usually a capital related item historically that why is this street not being addressed or why this street is? It's usually not an operating expense issue. And so, it's almost kinda like, because there's two different budgets. Can we discuss the operating budget and at least get the operating budget, could that be the space? And if you, on the capital side, because it's nor, on the operating side is not normally where you're gonna have the pushback. It's gonna be on the capital budget. I mean, we normally have the budget done by this, we don't wait and try to get, we never want it done in December. And the reason why is because if you have to have a budget approved by statute by our charter by the end of the year, and otherwise you start shoving budgets into the holiday where people are not available. And it sounds like we're into that same thing. It's hard to do a budget year to year when you got Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday where people are traveling. So, trying to accommodate everyone's schedule when you can get them together is kinda what's, that's always driven it. And that's historic, not just to Republic, but what I've historically seen is to have it done before Thanksgiving every, as much as you can. My staff know that since I got here, get it done before Thanksgiving so that we don't have to sit there, cause I've seen them drug out, uh, into December and you're up to the last minute deadline. So.
And I definitely don't wanna slow anything down. It's just in that whole discussion of having a first and a second read back before we approved that, the budget is something that I don't ever remember in that discussion, is having a part of that process. And so, now I'm feeling like I'm gonna have to go back and explain that to people as well, which adds another challenge. And I still feel like we're taking away that period that citizens have. Because even though this is to us, the citizens technically don't get that first read until the next meeting.
But they had the information.
The information has been a first read.
Not presented to them at the city council.
They had access to the information.
I'll let you explain that to your constituents.
I, I think I'm comfortable with it because this will be on YouTube and we can share that. I mean, I don't.
And if you're comfortable with that, that's up to you guys.
Sure.
I'm just saying, with my years on council, I, if, if, if I told someone that we were doing a first and a second read of a budget, to get it through, not to push it through, I understand why the city wants to do that, but constituents tend to see things differently than we do. So, they're not involved in this process. Anyone that's been paying attention over the years, this is a totally new process with a first read and a second read. And I'm a little bit nervous about giving it off a pledge.
But if they're involved, if you, like, the constituents are involved, they know that we've got this published prior to the meetings anyway. So, those are the, that covers those people that are.
So, I'm looking at all the citizens, not just the ones that are, so that's, that's the hard part is getting that information spread because I don't want this to go through and then a citizen come through in December and be, where's the budget? The budget's done. Oh, we had two reads on November the fifth.
The answer is that we've had this published three weeks prior to that and they had the opportunity to see that and comment on the, the YouTube videos. I, I really, I, I understand what you're saying. I do.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, that's my biggest concern because I know.
The budget is the budget. What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? I mean, you're gonna sit there and say, okay, take, why not?
We have all our election data, so. Yeah, I mean, it just creates so many different things that, right. Voting afterward. Just make sure that we talk to constituents to make sure that they're aware if we end up doing this, that they know. Because this, I'm just, with my, maybe, maybe your time's been different, but with my time, I know if I tried to run that by someone, that, that wouldn't fly. So, I, I'm just looking at that with the budget standpoint.
That's what I think. We would just have to make sure during the meeting to make it clear that this was published. We've had access. It was available to the public since beginning of October. We had a meeting tonight. We talked about it. You know, it's been out there and available for comment, but people were, a lot of people I talked to were opposed to the first, second read. They didn't like that. They thought it was gonna be a way for.
It was a test cell.
To slip things under. And I don't think that's what this is at all. It's just public perception. And that's what matters. I mean, because realistically, no, it doesn't matter what anybody says. We're not gonna show back up to the second read two weeks later and go, we need to change the budget tonight. Like, that's not, that's not gonna happen. So, it would just be all about making the gesture and doing that, but if that's gonna mess up open enrollment, make people, you know, during Thanksgiving holiday, trying to rush to get their insurance elections done and.
Lisa, what if we?
It's tough either way.
What if we did the second read?
That's what I was gonna say. I mean, we could, we could definitely make that work.
Make what work? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Make the, who the meeting up to the twelfth.
So, if we have to do a separate second read, if, if, if we did that second read on the twelfth instead of the nineteenth, could it be tight for open enrollment?
It still gives us an extra week though.
But if, we, we could make that work.
So, que, so a question. And this is, so if somebody's not there, can they join, I think, can they be considered attending the meeting if they're via Zoom?
If they're all or nothing. So, I mean, I prefer all, like, either if everybody wants to be on Zoom and video, that's fine. But if we have, if we have everybody else in person and one person calls in, that is not ideal.
The problem is if you've got two missing and you gotta approve the second read, you have issues with the majority of the vote if you have. So, then you're stuck if you have to go back and, I mean, again, I guess I, through the experience of my career, I'm not gonna assume a second read until there is absolutely been consensus, which is why we have the work sessions and go through this. So, if there's been questions about capital and those things, we've had the EMR system, the data analytics team, the admin building, the wastewater plant. The only one I haven't covered is, is the water tower. And that's, that's just waiting for the actual numbers and making sure we get that, that metric right. MMI way is a big outlier. I mean, I, I, I'm open, it's, it's your pleasure. It's your counsel. It's, you represent the citizens. Our job is to represent what, try to logistically place it in a most transparent model. And we in no way wanna try to shove it or rush it down anyone. And I hope that that is not received as the perception. I understand it, but I have to explain a lot of stuff every single day. And it's not always taken well, but I mean.
Yeah, I don't wanna create an issue. It's just, like, with, with, this is, I can sit here and agree all day long, but as soon as the public finds out that that happened, whether they know it or not, or know that intention, that intention is always there, the, the one that's, that we're not doing. And so, that's just, I just, I don't want twenty twenty-five to be a year of people looking back at us for what we did in November and December and holding that against the city all year long. And that's just what I worry about with that.
I know this, a different beast, but have you heard any feedback on us doing first and second read since that got passed in the election?
So, there has been a lot of conversations on telling people why, because it's been something easy to explain, like the plaid and everything else. And I haven't had a budget to go through. And that's where I feel like.
I heard a lot about it before the election when it was up. And then since then, I haven't heard any feedback on why was that a first and second? So, that's the only thing too, is.
And that's just the biggest thing between the, the budget and this, just because the budget, I mean, that's the year, that's all year to me in my mind when I'm talking to constituents about the budget. And it's not like I feel a lot of questions. I may not get anybody. But just the fact that I took that time from them, that's gonna be what they remember.
But, but are you with, with having this tonight?
And in transparency, I mean, that's the layer of transparency that I see too that's added. Say that again.
Are you taking it away from them with us having this workshop tonight and it being the favor?
No, you're adding, in my opinion, adding to that process that we've had in the past. Cause I've, every time I've ever done a budget in the past, we've always had a first read and a second read. And of course, the citizens, if they're paying attention, normally they pay attention to the council meeting, which is where they see that information. We get our questions. They get to say their piece and then that piece in between makes them feel good and satisfied when we're voting, or when I was voting as counsel. So, I don't wanna extend the process. I don't wanna make things hard for the city. In the name of transparency, that's a hard sell to me. Already with the first, second read budget, I would've been hard to sell that on the first, first portion on getting that through.
So, I do wanna clarification on whether they can be, be a Zoom if their face is recognized on the screen and part of it, because we've done that.
If only one of them is.
Two. But you gotta quorum if they're present, because I've seen other people do the same thing. I've seen that.
We can do it. We don't, we don't normally do it here. I don't recommend it, but there's nothing on the books that says we just really cannot do that. It's just not how we've done it. We've usually done all or nothing.
But during COVID, the state statute, as long as their face was present on the screen.
Yeah, I mean, I've had a sunset though. I'd have to look and see, like, the COVID exception you're talking about. I think that sunset. But I can look at that. I'm sure.
Well, that, that may be a provision that if you can do it, but the only way I know to do that from a compromise to the point of what it is that, cause I can't answer for what the, the feedback's gonna be. Um, the only way I know to do it is either that or, or pick another date or do it within, what, what is the timeline for when we could have the second meeting? Could, what, what is the time, what is the posting? Do we have to wait seven days in between meetings or could we have a special meeting two days after?
We have to publish at least, what is it, forty-eight hours in advance for, in, well, emergencies, twenty-four hours in advance. And then, so for something like this, we could do three days before. So, we're meeting on what day? Thursday? We could do the following Monday. It's still basis to next Tuesday.
We do it even earlier. It's Friday.
So, why don't you do that? Why don't we do, I mean, I hate to do this to you, but why don't, why don't have a special meeting on Monday and a special meeting on Thursday specifically for the budget and announce it on everything that we got? And just say, if you have a comment on the budget, you have the first read and the second read to answer questions.
I'm still not real comfortable with that just because that, that's not that people pay attention all the time, but they're paying less attention during the week than they are.
Then I'll defer to what you would like to do, cause I, you know, I'll find anything possible.
I didn't know that, that, the, the whole thing with the healthcare, I, I mean, I think everyone is, you have to have it done by twelve first. So, I didn't realize that was in order to get the budget done earlier. Um, I'm just, I, I still really struggle with taking away that week in between for the citizens. That's the time, in my opinion, that the citizens have. Regardless of how many workshops we have or anything else, that was the published date that we had. So, in my mind, if I'm a citizen paying attention and I have it on my calendar and I can't pay attention all the time, that's the date I had. That's what's in my mind is the first time. So.
And Mayor, I believe as per the, the charter, we set, you, you have the consent to set the agenda. So, if you wanna set the agenda for the November fifth and the twelfth, I believe under the charter, that is your consent. So, I mean, I mean.
You're talking about one week after the, so having the.
Yeah, I mean, I believe that, yeah, I believe that that has to be established with the, I mean, the mayor has some, there is some saying in the charter how that is. And I'm almost certain that's the way it reads. So, I mean, if that's.
So, with that, how many conflicts would that create as far as what else is on the agenda between that and the twenty-first?
I don't, I don't know that question.
With the nineteenth, but that's, that's, I mean.
The conflict is you have, you're, you're two, you're down two people, but it does not require, it would just require all six to vote yes for the budget.
Which, which one are you talking about?
The twelfth.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll go on the fifth. I'm on, I'm on the country on the fifth, but I'll be, I'll be here on that.
Yeah, I will. I hear the twelfth. The twelfth.
So, we have seven on the week back on the twelfth?
Yeah, I'll be back.
So, then would we then have a meeting on November the nineteenth after that?
No.
So, that would eliminate that meeting?
We would just eliminate the November nineteenth meeting.
And so, then we would just have the one meeting in December.
Or could you just have an emergency meeting on the twelfth?
I mean, to me, that would be a fair compromise.
Be a quick meeting, quick done, the second reading.
And then just do the nineteenth.
Just do the nineteenth. Just make it a quick reading, one, one meeting on the agenda.
Just keep the nineteenth.
Keep the nineteenth and then just.
And so, what that would say is we wanted, you wanted to give an additional seven days for any questions on the second read.
From, so, so you're, you're saying between the fifth and the nineteenth?
Do one on the twelfth, one week later.
Fifth, fifth and the twelfth.
Fifth and the twelfth.
Twelfth and the twelfth.
Cause to the point, it is election day.
The fifth is.
Yes, so.
And that's seven days between the, the first reading and the time for citizens. So, in my mind, seven days is like that minimum period. So, I would be comfortable with that. Wouldn't necessarily have to be that two weeks.
But, but back to your point, if they've already got all these in their calendar for the nineteenth and they're not paying enough attention and then we run it through on the twelfth, what difference is that?
Two weeks and one week.
But the second read.
But you can, you can announce the meeting at the fifth.
And it gives you more time to talk to constituents. I mean, I'm looking at it as a compromise, not, not as an all solve all.
And it's this, yeah.
All solve all, I would say, keep the original dates, but.
And that is if we have comment on the first read or is this?
I'm saying regardless.
Give, give people who don't come to the meeting opportunity to reach out with concerns about the budget before we do the second read or pass it.
And that, that's my only concern. Whether they come to me or not, that's their, their concern, but it's, it's my obligation, I feel, in transparency to give that time period for that to occur.
And then you'll have someone that says, well, you didn't give me two weeks.
Say again.
Then you'll have someone that says, well, you didn't give me two weeks and I had, so I.
But I'm confident in my decision that I'm in compromise, that you still had time.
And it'll be announced, it'll be announced a week before the meeting, so.
And it'll be announced and we'll have some sort of announcement, but.
If we weren't having this, I would agree with you a hundred percent.
And I see this as additional versus obligated to city council meetings.
Right. Now, I agree that it's additional that we're taking our time for the citizens to give them more time to review this. And not less.
Absolutely.
I think hindsight's twenty twenty and, and not that we didn't, but I know a lot of time and effort goes into it and they started back in July nineteenth. And so, and I didn't do either at the city council meeting, but I think really referencing when we're having these workshops to, you know, to say, hey, you know, that, that's the time on there, cause this is, this one's complicated too. It's, it's, it's tougher to talk about, but I mean, I think, you know, going forward, if we do that, and I say we didn't do it completely, but that would make it a lot easier to say, hey, here's a workshop. I mean, I don't see anybody that showed up today, um, but it gives the opportunity, a little more time for people to look at it.
I mean, I, I really appreciate having this year, having the budget as early as we did. Like, I don't think I've ever had that. And that, to me, in my mind, is one thing I'm very thankful for because normally I've always felt kinda rushed in this process. Having that as early as we have, I have felt more comfortable on understanding it myself and talking to the constituency, but still having that process is what, what's getting at me. It's not that I'm gonna have more questions either, but.
You, no, no, it's not. Just as a creative idea, what about if we put something out on social media that there was a budget workshop and there will be a first and second read on the fifth?
I feel it'd be flame to a fire.
Suggesting that they, they look into it.
If I said budget, first, second read. That just. If you get up at five o'clock, drive from Springfield down here, go vote.
And it's gonna be long lines.
Yeah, so if anyone wants to come to the meeting and talk, they can.
And that's the other thing too, is yeah, voting day and, and that's a whole nother.
We can try to move.
Squeezing through with two reads on election day with budget for the year. I mean, that's a Green County Commonwealth story, but.
You need something to write about.
It would be too.
So, I mean, what, what kinda mark consensus then? I mean, November the fifth, November the nineteenth? Is this a discussion we need to kinda have now with?
Special meeting on the twelfth?
Special meeting on the twelfth.
Or on the twelfth.
The second, the second reading.
We're not really voting. We're just giving a, I'm, I'm, I'm taking in the insight. We'll basically set up.
I'm okay. We keep it up the way it is.
The fifth and the twelfth, that would be next, next Tuesday and then the Tuesday right after.
Yep.
Do we have Chris is gonna be able to make the twelfth?
Hey, Laura, did you hear that question?
No, we're, we're only vaguely, I mean, we're trying to follow up, like, we hear fifth, twelfth and nineteenth.
No, fifth, twelfth and nineteenth. We're gonna keep the normal nineteenth meeting, but the spe, there'll be a special call meeting on the twelfth.
Just for budget.
Just for budget.
Do you know, do you know if Chris will be able to make it? Have you heard?
I don't know.
Okay. So, then in November, just to clarify, we'll have the November fifth, which will be Tuesday, the special meeting after for the second read of the budget. And then November the nineteenth for the additional agenda IOs.
Regular session on nineteenth.
And then we have a short month in December with one meeting in December. Does every, is, I mean, does that kinda sound like heck no or possibly?
I mean, I don't wanna keep everyone in longer than possible, but I mean, this is.
Oh, I don't wanna, wait a minute. I got, I just, I got a workshop on the twelfth on water rates. So, why don't we just call a special meeting? We've already got you assembled. But that's in the middle of the day. So, that means you'd be in two meetings, so.
That's perfect.
Can you, can you have a? An official council meeting? I guess you can call them anytime, right?
Yeah, what you could do is we could do this. We could move the work session. So, this is what my point of it is, though, to, to Councilmember Gerke's point, the work sessions are placed on the agenda and announced. So, this was, the, the meetings are, these were announced, so that, that they weren't, they, they are, is a public announcement that has to take place and the press is present for that. But the workshop is the, so we could move the workshop to five o'clock on the twelfth because it's encompassing the water rate, go into the, you know, it, it leans into it, uh, and then go into the sec, then call the meeting into order. We may, I don't know if I got an hour's worth, I hope, pray to God, I don't have an hour's worth of discussion on the, I mean, for just what I have to show. Um, and then call the meeting into order at six o'clock. So, and, but here's the other thing, will we be in this space having those meetings by then?
No.
Okay. So, we'll utilize, so our plan to move into this, but, but we'll still be using that over there. Okay, that might be even better, cause in that way there would be no like, hey, none of that, the location changed. So, I understand the optic. So, getting it all to this point, we can sit there and, uh, do the, I'll do a special, we'll do a workshop. Laura, next Tuesday night, we need to change, but thank you. So, the. So the announcement will be made next Tuesday night, like it is with each council session, when that meeting will be, we'll have a workshop on the water rates. And then we'll have, we'll call the meeting into order to discuss the budget for the second read. And then we'll just continue on the November nineteenth calendar with whatever is left on that agenda.
But does it help, I mean, next year or going forward, um, again, this is open to everybody, right? Anyone can come here to this, right?
Yeah, it's been, yeah, there's.
Yeah, so I mean, does it, does that help in the future of, especially since we're getting these done quicker, we don't want to rush you guys, but, um, you know, making sure we announce that and having that going forward, you know, I don't know if you need to have a workshop and then vote on it, you know, and then have it presented again, I mean, I don't know if you need to do that going forward or not, I guess.
How early can we do our budget for the future?
Uh, well, we start doing them too early, then we're gonna start doing more amendments, because once you start forecasting in September and July or August, revenues change and you're like, wait a minute, we just had a big announcement. Or like the water tower, we've waited all year to get the nu- waiting for EPA on our grant, what we had to allocate and how to get the numbers to a certain point. Plus, the automate the water meters, I mean, there's a lot more to it. Deferring, waiting for the legislative session to see whether we got more money on the wastewater side or what we, so it's not your typical year, but the insure- the way our timeline is on the insurance and when you gotta do open enrollment, it makes it much more difficult when you have to have an approved budget done. So our goal is to get it done before December, but like I said, we did announce in a public setting, so this is all in our agendas and everything to that point. Whether people, but to the point of it is, in a first read and a second read, people are gonna say, there is potential that someone could ask the question, and then you have seven days to say, hey, this is what I've heard, I've got questions to ask whether they show up or not. That that is, um.
I mean, I.
The next year, I think we still do it the same way, it's just either that or we do, hey, come one, come all, we're gonna do the budget presentation tonight.
And and I mean, from the beginning standpoint, knowing that from the beginning that we were gonna have a first and a second read, until that was mentioned here, I I had no idea that we were gonna try to do that on a first and a second read, and so even from my position, I, it's just a little, the optics a little off.
Yeah, I I I apologize, it's in the admin report, it's been outlined in there how he was gonna do the budget, so it's not, again, there's not anything that we haven't communicated, whether it was noticed or not, can't speak to that, but I can say that how we've communicated it in our reporting and what we're doing has been very transparent, I believe it's all outlined of what the schedule was going to be. So no ill, I hear it and we'll we'll make sure, but it just makes me in the future, make sure it's like, are we all understanding what we're sending out for review? Versus, hey, I didn't know about this, it's out there, and it's in your information too. So I just want to be clear that we are going through our work to write this stuff in these reports, and I just want to make sure that we're, they're being read too, because it, we have tried to say, hey, if there's office, tell us, call us three weeks in advance and let us know, so I understand that everybody's got work to do and different things, but making sure we're being transparent and laying this out there of how we're going about it, like, hey, I got concerns. I had no problem with the concern, I'd just like to know about it before we get here, we're trying to do this in a workshop setting. That's my only comment regarding that, is like, I understand, wanna be transparent, we're trying to do that, so. And I, I don't mind to do that, but we need some work back on that, because it's hard for us now to say, what do we gotta go scrambling? Because we thought we've, we've told it and we're here just to communicate and recommunicate again, so I appreciate the support to keep it, but at the same time, I also have to appreciate what we haven't heard until now. And just like to know that a little bit, that's what the discussions are for, but not on the timing of it, because that's why we announce it each Tuesday, every other Tuesday night. If I'm.
And I appreciate.
Trying to just be respectful and professional of how I'm responding to that, because I'm like.
And I appreciate having all that information, but if I missed it, I can imagine that almost every constituent I talked to missed it too, so I'd I'd.
I can't speak.
Missed that in the admin report as far as having the first and second read. I knew we were going through the process, I just didn't know about that, so that's just all of it. So I like the process, I like the way you guys did it this year with having everything laid out, and of this process, reading it this year, I think to me in my mind, has been easier than every other year, and I know it's been a long, putting them both of them together with the capital improvements plan and the budget, I think that's a big improvement over what we've done in the years.
Oh, it's fantastic, yeah, it it's phenomenal.
It's, it's amazing to see it on one document versus trying to figure out what we did on the CIP, and then what we did during the budget and how they align, and then what question goes with what, so yeah, I I'm appreciative of the work staff did on putting this together.
Years ago was very painful, this was, this was nice, so thank you guys very much.
You're welcome. Five, twelve, nineteen, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You said, when do amendments come in, was it, and you told me before, is it a certain percentage change, amount change, or do we just, you know, when when do we have to go back and amend the budget?
There is no hard and fast rule, typically, we're looking at about mid-year to do the first budget amendment. If we see a a fairly significant difference with regards to some revenue line or some expense line, we might come earlier. But typically, it takes us six months to sort of get a great flavor for where sales tax revenue is, property tax revenue, et cetera, so.
But but to your point, what, and and Dan, the ones that have been, that have been here before, the city historically didn't do budget amendments, they waited till the very end of the year. So what we've done and we've changed the way we go about it is we, we read the data, where's it going, and then we make the, like, we've missed a nu- or a project comes up, I mean, we're a growing community with new developments, you're like, okay, we need to go and do a budget amendment sooner. So if we, if we got the budget in October, it's very likely you would have a March, April budget amendment, just because there'd be a big change or shift. But as long as the council would adopt those policies, like, yes, that's part of our overall budgeting process that we give ourselves room to go back in, and you're like, because historically, what happens to a city staff member is like, well, why didn't you budget for that? Well, okay, we we're asked to get it ready in October, that changed between January, you're like, okay, it can't be held to a number when the environment changed.
Yeah.
So, but the environment's changed to how this council allows us to actually function, I mean, this city is much different on the side, like, we, our spending limits, things that we're allowed to do, and they're very conducive to doing budget amendments versus saying, I don't want to do that, because we should have budgeted in. So it's not uncommon, I've even done as many as three a year whenever you have, in this city, so it's not uncommon.
Yeah, I'd have been along, being the last couple of years, the 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 details put into it and keeping up the data, it's really improved.
Chris said he can be here on the twelfth.
Telepathy?
Yeah.
The attorney just said.
Not with him. And that's a matter of public record, by the way.
Any other questions for Bob or the staff?
I I have two things, real quick on the on the day for city council.
Really?
I plan, I plan all my trips, all, everything around city council, so when we do change council meetings or add it like this, and then then some of us that had planned around that, you know, that that's something that you kind of have to consider too, so.
Absolutely, yeah, I I think all of us are kind of in that same boat, so. I'm not trying to add additional work, it's just to me, even with my own life, the citizens come first, so that transparency in my own life, I know we have eight of us.
I understand that, but yes, but if you, but if people, if if the council isn't able to be there to vote, then you're taking those citizens' voice away too, from my, from my ward.
By adding?
If I'm not able, if I'm not.
Workshop? By adding a meeting on a day we have a workshop, I mean, we're kind of already there anyway.
But the council wasn't set.
Sure, no, I understand that, and I quite agree with you that we set that during the the year, the beginning of the year with that list, that's what I use to make my schedule through the year.
Right.
So I definitely see that, and I definitely take everything into consideration, your time and everything else.
I'm not talking about the time, I'm talking about the vote itself. So, so I won't vote on it.
So you'll miss the workshop and the vote.
Yeah, the workshop was put in after the fact, and and everyone knew I was gonna miss that, but the voting is done tonight, so.
But the citizens, the, all of the citizens of Republic will have that additional time, so that's kind of what I have to look at too, is all of the citizens have that additional time.
But their voice is out of town that night.
Half of their voice.
Right, yeah.
So no, I completely understand that and completely take that into consideration. Unfortunately, that's nine of us with private lives that it would take to juggle through every single time, so I do appreciate that, it's just the same, I mean, the business of the city to me kind of takes priority over different things in our lives that we have throughout the year, if that makes sense, like, trying to keep that schedule. I'm not trying to overburden you, but at the same time, a budget that goes through here is vitally important to me.
Right, and then for the staff.
One one more thing, on the wastewater plant, don't kill me here, okay? How do we prevent this in the future? David Cameron, I have full trust in him, okay, and, but he may not always be here. How, and just let me go back to when that treatment plant was put in that spot early on and none of us were there, was there. How did that council, I mean, it's it's on top of a hill. How do we prevent that in the future? How how would I vote, you know, if I was back in that time, how would I know how to vote for that?
Public perception.
Not, not even that, I'm just saying, how do we keep from getting in that situation again? Because we may not have all the information. I'm assuming that if council then knew it was on top of a hill.
We did.
Okay.
We knew.
Then I rest, I rest my case.
We were, we were fighting public perception on that.
There were, there.
A hundred percent.
But I I I think that.
The citizens voted for that, yep.
To the location?
So there's, there's three votes, I I'll still say this, I think that public perception is one thing, but I think it take, and I'm not taking anything away from the nineteen ninety-nine discussion or who or who, what, or when is there. But you gotta be at at least have some general awareness of what you're, you need to understand and for, what I think that Bob and his team do now, and what we do very well, having your fiscal forecast all the way out, because I'll tell you something, because of the wastewater plant, it's about to duplicate on the water side, because it's had to be deferred, because it's a hundred fifty million dollar upgrade. So guess what got put on the back burner, because if you look at the rates, the only ordinance in this city that requires a public hearing, the council set was, okay, in the future, on sewer rates, we'll do a public hearing. They didn't do that on water, and they're a third of the sewer rate, because like, in the future, we'll make sure we watch the sewer rate. Well, the reason why is because they voted to put it on a hill. The reason we just spent twenty-five million dollars was to upgrade all the pumps to pump it back up the hill. But the cost to relocate it back to where it originally was would have been two hundred fifty million, so I think a lot of it has, you have to have, engineering firms don't pay the cheapest people to tell you what the ordinance is on the record. And the se- second thing is have people actually tell you what you need to hear, not what you want to hear. And I think in elected bodies, what happens with this, I'm getting ready to tell you about a water rate that I don't want to share. My chief of staff's sitting right back there and has to listen to me talk about what keeps me up. This council's asking me every time, what keeps me up at night, is that wastewater, has been the wastewater plant? So how do you keep it doing? You keep it the forefront and say, listen, I understand we're leading in a lot of things, but we're leading in rates now again too. It's not where you want to be number one, but I think it's because this is what happens when you don't have utility boards and you let a local body and public influence influence it, because city utilities does not have this problem. But a lot of utilities, I'm not just saying Republic, this is not the only city that's up there asking for ARPA dollars for making up for deferred maintenance. You just happen to have a person in a group that's gonna tell you what you need to hear, and granted that that public perception is gonna show up on social media sites, and I'm the first recipient of it. And so I get it, but the best thing you can do is keep being bold leaders and making tough decisions, but you're gonna have to deal with, and it's just being a public servant is not always gonna be that easy street, that's how you stay out of it, you're asking me for the answer. Great job to the group. Trent, I will say this, and Jake, you, I mean, watch Bob, what you're doing with your team, I just want to make this publicly known, to allow your team to present and be a mentor and do this, and you guys have to get up, you guys did a fantastic job.
Yeah, you did.
Jake, you're growing and doing fantastic things, it's fun to watch you, you're that silent, quiet assassin that's gonna go in there and do the math and probably disagree with me sometimes. Trent, I don't pick the sidewalks in towns, just want to clarify. But this, this young man, I will tell you, when it comes to the grant side and what he's doing for us to go out on this twenty-five million dollars for MM Highway, those things get looked over. We've generated fifty million dollars in ARPA tax money and five million omnibus money. It's fifty-five million dollars we've helped save, but what he's done, that ADN transition plan was the last time it was being updated in twenty fifteen and sixteen. But the work that's going out there looking for additional funds for our citizens, I don't want that to get overlooked. That's like, it's like, this is the cost, this is the expense, and I think they went through it so fast and so easily, it's like, that's almost a hun- that's that'd be almost, and if we could generate some more in the legislature, and I'm hoping we're gonna work on it again this year, that's close to almost ninety million dollars that we've been able to get that has not come from taxes or rates. And so kudos, and Bob, interesting, come, I know you don't like accolades, but I I'm telling you, this budget process, I'd be hard pressed to see if you can find it into the staff that helped work to put it together, it's impeccable. So I sit back and, if the longest discussion we've got is just logistics of the meeting, that's that's great news. See, that's just the levity I'm gonna bring to end tonight.
Yeah, I agree, excellent job. Yeah, yeah, that was the easiest budget I think I've ever had to look at as far as leaving the numbers and representation and color, so I mean, you guys.
And 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 our goal is to put this process in place so that we do get the information out earlier.
And easy, easy to relate.
Yes.
It's warping your neighborhood, I said, give you a hundred percent on wastewater.
But you can't go blame the eighty-eight people and probably four hundred fifty showed up for the.
Yep, absolutely.
So probably, probably if people decided that it was gonna cost that much later. Just a bonus agenda.